Good evening all.
Good evening.
Mr. Chen, I see recording, not live streaming. Is that accurate? Oh, here we go. Good evening all. It is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Rules Research Committee meeting to order. Let's please begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am Chairman Joy Cologne. And we have a number of resolutions to get through this evening. Can we please call the role, Margaret?
Joy Cologne?
Here. Nicole Satin?
Here.
Kelly Malozzi?
Here.
Kevin Shively?
Here.
Dee Dee Robinson? I saw Dee Dee. There we go. Mike Buswell?
Here.
Alyssa Hall?
Here.
Krista Cruz?
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum. Thank you. Is there anything that's on the agenda other than the resolutions to begin with this evening? Okay, hearing nothing. Why don't we begin with TC 29-06? Councilman Shively, can you please read the resolution?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Resolution TC 29-06, be it resolved that Patrick Clark be and the same is hereby reappointed as the member of the Pension Board for a term extending to the first Monday in December 2025.
Great, thank you. And is Mr. Clark here?
I think we need a second.
Thank you.
I am here.
Okay, before we have Mr. Clark begin, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry, Joy. I didn't see who said that.
Nikki Satin.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Clark, thank you so much for being here, and I understand that this is a reappointment. What makes you want to stay on the Pension Board, as it were?
In kind of my brief statement I sent to Cindy this morning. I've been serving on the Pension Board beginning in 2016. Just as a background for those who did not see the statement, I own a registered investment advisory firm in Southport. So I do have some experience working with investments, and I do have knowledge of the markets, portfolio management. And I really, it's just been, it's been a pleasure to serve, to play a small part for the town of Trumbull. What I have enjoyed most about being on the board is seeing the progress that the pension has made, you know, improving its funded ratios over the past several years. Also, you know, looking to, I don't know if modernize is the right word, but, you know, employ different investments as we face different challenges with, with the markets going forward. But, you know, it's been, it's really been a pleasure to be on the board because everyone seems to work together with a, with a common spirit and energy to, you know, for the, for the, you know, betterment of the pension and for the town of Trumbull. And of that, it's always been, it's, 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 it's just been a pleasure to be on. I wish to continue for another four years and see where we are at that point. But it's been, again, a great enjoyment for me.
Well, Mr. Clark, thank you again for your service. Can we take this to a vote, please?
Actually, Madam Chair, may I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
So I was just curious, just, just for completeness and, and in keeping with the, the apportionment requirements of our, of our charter, can, would Mr. Clark let us know what his, if he has a political affiliation as far as registered party?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a registered Republican.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So with that said, can we now bring it to a vote? Can we have a roll call?
We need a roll call, or can we do by unanimous consent?
Mr. Shoppick?
Unless there's objection, then you can take it by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, it seems we're all in agreement. Carry forward without. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution TC 29-07.
One quick, excuse me. Is it possible I could step away?
Yes, thank you so much.
I'm just, I have, I have several health issues. One possibly COVID-related, but also my wife's been dealing with a health issue. So it just, I'm trying to juggle a few things right now, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate. So thanks, thanks for your, your vote of confidence, and I look forward for, to serving the town for another four years. So thank you.
Feel good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a general statement, after you have spoken this evening, if you are up to be appointed, you can step away from the call unless anyone has a question for the person. Okay, moving on to Resolution TC 29-07, Mr. Robinson, can you please read that resolution? Mr. Robinson?
I had to unmute myself. I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
You said TC 29-07?
Correct.
Resolution TC 29-07, to consider and act upon a resolution which would appoint Eric Paulson as a member of the Pension Board for a term extending to the first Monday in December 2024.
Okay, so it's going to be on that second page where it says be it resolved. So we're going to go ahead and take it into consideration that this is Mr. Robinson's first time, so it'll be on that second page for the next time, Mr. Robinson. So be it resolved. So just make that amendment there, please, Margaret. Do I have a second?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you. And is Mr. Paulson here?
I, I am. Good evening, everyone. Eric Paulson. I reside at 69 Brittany Avenue. I'm a registered Democrat. In addition to formerly being on the Town Council, my background is in investment management and certified, I was a certified financial planner for many years. I'm now a professional trader. And I manage a portfolio of stocks and other investments.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Paulson. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, so we have the second, no discussion. Can we pass this with unanimous consent? Any objections? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, after what Mr. Clark said, I look forward to working with the rest of the Pension Board and I'm excited to get started.
Thank you. Okay, we are at Resolution TC 29.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know, especially our new members of the, the council and our people that are here this evening to be nominated for these positions, that this still, even though they've been passed, firstly, the first two, they have to go to the council on Thursday night for the full council to vote on each of these positions. So until that happens, the, the vote is not final. Just want to let everybody know the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Certainly, our first election mentor for that reminder. Appreciate it. This is my first time as well, so thank you, everyone, for your patience.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. I will continue to try. We are at Resolution TC 29-08. Can I have Ms. Satin, please, bring that to the floor?
Sure. Resolution TC 29-08, be it resolved that Michael Miller be and the same is hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term extended to the first Monday in December 2024.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. With this, how come we're replacing a Republican with a Democrat on this appointee?
I can, do you want me to respond to that, Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
Dan Shoppick, the town attorney. The, he resigned. And there's been a, there's been a vacancy for a while for the third alternate's position. So another name is put up next month, that other seat can be filled. It's just, it's a way, it's not so much that it's a Republican seat, it's that we now have two vacancies. And so we're filling it. That happens to be the seat that was the Republican held. But he did resign.
As an alternate, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, did you have an additional question?
No, not at the moment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, will this be passed unanimously?
Date my party affiliation? I mean, it's obvious.
Please.
I'm Mike Miller, I'm registered Democrat.
Okay, and what makes you want to serve, Mr. Miller?
I spent the last two years serving on the Town Council, was wanting to stay involved, not only in the community, but then be part of how the future is shaped within Trumbull. This seemed like an ideal way to do that.
And we thank you for your continued service. Will we need a roll call vote, or will this be unanimous?
I vote no.
Okay, so that'll be a roll call. Thank you, Margaret. Nicole Satin?
Yes.
Kelly Malozzi?
Yes.
Kevin Shively?
Yes.
Dee Dee Robinson?
No.
Mike Buswell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Resolution TC 29-09. Mr. Buswell, can you please bring that to the floor?
Hold on one second. Let me pull it up.
Not a problem. While he's doing that, can I ask you, if you're not speaking, can you please mute? That way, we just don't have interference, and we can get through the resolutions, and I thank you so much in advance.
Madam Chair, what, what resolution was it?
It's TC 29-09.
Okay, so to consider and act, our resolution would put established Trumbull High Weight Room Wellness Center Building Committee.
Yeah, we, again, I think we need to read the resolutions that are under the, where the header resolutions, where it says be it resolved.
It's the second page of the attachment, everyone.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Ashley. I think just for, I know this was attempted, the explanation was attempted, but when we bring resolutions as members of the council to the floor, you always read the version of the resolution that starts with Resolution TC 20-whatever, be it resolved. So the first iteration of the resolutions is on paper, and the second iteration that starts with be it resolved is the one we bring. So when you're asked at subcommittee meetings or full council meetings to bring that resolution, the be it resolved version is the one you should read into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Guardiano. And for the benefit of our newer members, I have done that on several occasions. So you are not alone. You're in, I think, pretty good company. Can I please have a second on the motion?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you. And is there any chance that this will be a unanimous vote? Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Satin?
Yeah, my question, I just have a quick question regarding, you know, none of the funds have been allocated to this project yet, which I think is important to know for the public. And I'm just wondering what the objectives of forming the committee right now, what are the objectives of the committee members going to be at this point in time?
Okay, is there anyone here to speak to that?
I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, we're looking, right now, we're looking to do a fundraiser.
Identify yourself, Lucinda.
Oh, hi, Lucinda Timpinelli. Okay, thank you. Do I have to say I'm a Democrat or Republican or anything? I'm a Democrat, okay?
Well, you're on the board of N.
And I am on the board of N. Yes, I am. Okay, the weight room, we decided, has not been renovated since 1974. So right now, we have plans in progress. We have a fundraiser that's on hold because I didn't think it was proper to do any fundraisers without a building committee in place because a building committee has to approve different things. So I thought it was a better idea, called Mrs. Tesoro. She told me that that was true. You have, you really should have a building committee because this is going to be construction. So we have people waiting to make donations. We have a fundraiser waiting to be started. So we wanted to get a committee in place so we can move forward.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question, a follow-up question to Ms. Timpinelli through the chair. I, my understanding is that there is, I believe, already some design monies that have been allocated, or is that, do I have that correct? Or has there been any money allocated at all towards any, any facet of this project at this point?
Yes, at this point, there's $35,000 in design. We haven't done anything with that, and we can't.
Right, okay. And, and do you know also, again, through the chair, if, if there will be any pursuit of any type of matching funds or grants or anything like that from, from the state or other sources?
Well, that's what we're looking into now, and that's what, that's why we started a fundraiser, and the other members that are on this committee that want to be on this committee, if you approve it, are looking at that, exactly what you said.
And of course, you can't do anything without that. To be able to do that, of course.
That's correct. And I, I didn't think it was right to start doing that without being approved.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, that $35,000 was approved in the funding plan last year by both the Board of Finance and the Town Council.
Okay, so thank you to everyone who has spoken on this resolution. Transparency is great for our viewers and our community. That said, can we pass this one through? Okay, it sounds like it's unanimous. I don't have any objections. We are going to move on to the next resolution. It is passed unanimously, Margaret. We are now at TC 29-10, and why don't we have Ms. Kelly Malozzi bring that to the floor?
Resolution TC 29-10, be it resolved that Kimberly Lombardi be and the same is hereby appointed as a member of the Trumbull High School Weight Room slash Wellness Center Building Committee and is further appointed as its chair.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Lombardi?
Yeah.
I'm here.
If I may interrupt, the screen froze. Who did the second? It was Kevin Shively? Thank you so much. Thank you. Hi, Ms. Lombardi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for being here. For the benefit of the viewers, can you state your current political party affiliation? And I say that a little tongue-in-cheek because there was a little snafu at the state level that we were in discussion about before the call began.
Exactly. I'm, I'm registered unaffiliated.
Thank you. And why do you want to serve as the chair?
Actually, you know, I've, I've had three children go through Trumbull High School, all three boys athletes, and I've been involved in the Trumbull Touchdown Club for over 13 years. I was president for seven of those years, and the weight room and the wellness center at Trumbull High School has been something that we have been fundraising through the Trumbull Touchdown Club for over several years. We've had to send the kids out to in-sports. We've had to send them to different facilities because our weight room is so small that it's been so difficult to keep the kids, you know, well-trained, and that's also a safety issue at the end of the day, because if they're not trained properly, it becomes a safety issue on the field as well. So it's just been a passion of mine over these last several years to see this project finally come to fruition. There's been a lot of discussion about it. So that's really why I'm interested in being involved.
Okay, well, thank you for your interest and potential service. How, I'm so sorry. Do we have this going through completely, or do we have any objections? Okay, it sounds like it's being passed unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Lombardi. Okay, we are at TC 29-11. Can I please have, let's see, Mr. Shively bring that to the floor?
Certainly. Resolution TC 29-11, be it resolved that John Morello be and the same is hereby appointed as a member of the Trumbull High School Weight Room Wellness Center Building Committee.
Great, can I have a second, please?
Second, Kelly Malazzy.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I believe Mr. Morello is, is here, right? I see him right there.
Okay, Mr. Morello, can you please share your party affiliation and why you'd like to be on this committee?
Yes, I am a registered Democrat, and I currently work for the Board of Education. I am the head of maintenance and custodial supervisor. So I'm a licensed electrician by trade. I've been around construction for about 25 years. And ultimately, I would be involved in, and be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of this space. So to see it from the ground up, I think would be beneficial from both my standpoint as well as my staff's.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing that there isn't any, can we pass this unanimously? Excellent, no objections. Thank you so much, Mr. Morello. We'll see you again.
Madam Chair, Dan Shoppick, if I could just add to the, to the minutes, state statute requires that the building, that a school building committee has a person on the committee with construction experience, and Mr., just to note that Mr. Morello fills that bill.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Morello.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to TC 29-12. Ms. Satin, can we please have you bring that to the floor?
Resolution TC 29-12, be it resolved that Julie DiMarco be and the same is hereby appointed as a member of the Trumbull High School Weight Room Wellness Center Building Committee.
Thank you so much. A second, please?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you very much. Ms. DiMarco, I see that you're here. Can you please tell us your party affiliation and why you'd like to be on this committee?
I am unaffiliated. I'm registered unaffiliated. I would like to be on this committee as a graduate of Trumbull High, who used to use that weight room. Currently has a sophomore who's a football player and a basketball player who uses the weight room and an active fundraiser for the Trumbull Touchdown Club. I feel the weight room is slash Wellness Center is very important, not only to the athletes, but the student body of Trumbull High. Trumbull High offers a weightlifting class to their students. And for a weight room that hasn't been updated since the late 70s, early 80s, is not sufficient. I am a parent that spends tons of money for my son to have training because he does not have the proper equipment to work out in at Trumbull High. I have fundraised greatly for the Touchdown Club, whether it was the scoreboard, securing all the advertising, and the field signs, as well as if anybody notices the spray painted tees across town, I have done all those. So I would be more than willing and happy to help fundraise so future students and athletes of the high school could have a better wellness facility, not only for get them to be better athletes, but also for mental health.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. DiMarco. Is there any further discussion? No? Okay, then, seeing that there's none, can we pass this unanimously? Okay, seeing no objections, let's move on. Thank you, Ms. DiMarco. Okay, we are at TC 29-13. Mr. Buswell, can you please bring that to the floor?
All right, I was on mute.
Thank you, no worries.
Resolution TC 29-13, be it resolved that Mark Sitar be and the same is hereby appointed as a member of the Trumbull High Weight Room Wellness Center Building Committee.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second. Kelly Malazzy.
Okay, thank you both. I see that Mr. Sitar's here. Mrs. Sitar, please state your party affiliation as well as your interest in this committee.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Mark Sitar, and I am a registered Republican. And I am a proud graduate of Trumbull High School class of 1978, and was also a member of Trumbull High School's first state champion football team in 1977. So, you know, my interest goes back a long ways. A lot of pride and tradition at Trumbull, and to Kim Lombardi's point earlier, the facility is definitely in need of upgrading. You know, we need to give our kids the tools to compete and be competitive in all sports at Trumbull High School. And this will help them, you know, be successful in their future endeavors, and you know, I'm very interested in helping out wherever I can to give back to a program that was so great to me.
All right, Mr. Sitar, thank you so much for coming full circle with the town and the community. We look forward to you serving. Are there any objections to this resolution? Okay, seeing that there is none, good luck, and we'll see you at the Town Council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, passed unanimously. We are now at TC 29-14. Gosh, Mr. Buswell, I guess I can't have you read this one. So we will ask Mr. Robinson to please read this one. Thank you.
Okay. You said TC, okay. Resolution TC 29-14, be it resolved that Mike Buswell be and the same is hereby appointed as Town Council Representative to the Trumbull High School Weight Room Wellness Center and Building Committee.
Okay, thank you. Can I please have a second?
I'll second. Nikki Satin.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Buswell? Hi.
How are you?
Tell us all about yourself.
All right, so born and raised in Trumbull. My father attended Trumbull High. I'm the youngest of four siblings that went to Trumbull High. All of my three older siblings all played sports at Trumbull High, and I followed in their footsteps. So all of us are very familiar with the weight room. It was something that I was actually very hopeful of getting renovated when we did high school renovation. I know that was one of the projects that fell short. So when the discussion came about that this might be something that we'd actually finally be able to push through, I obviously stepped up and volunteered because I think it's incredibly important. I mean, we have, we have a massive high school. You know, the gym teachers, you know, desperately need a, you know, a state-of-the-art wellness center, as long, as well as our, you know, all of our sport teams, both male and female. So I think it's, you know, definitely time to see that upgrade on that property.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Buswell. Mr. Buswell's new to me, but he's also part of Town Council. I can't imagine that there are any objections, but are there any at this time? Okay, so that will be passed unanimously? Great, thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Buswell.
Thank you.
All right, so we are moving on to TC 29-15. Can we please have Kelly Malazzy bring that to the floor?
Resolution TC 29-15, be it resolved that Thomas Whitmoyer be and the same is hereby appointed as a Town Council Representative to the Trumbull High School Weight Room Wellness Center Building Committee.
Thank you. Can I please have a second?
I'll second that. Nikki Satin.
Thank you so much. Any discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes, thank you.
Ashley Guardiano. Mr. Whitmoyer is not here tonight. He will obviously be at the full council meeting on Thursday, should anybody have questions.
Thank you for the benefit of the viewers. Mr. Whitmoyer is also on Town Council, so we will go with that for now. Thank you so much, Ms. Guardiano. Can I ask, can we pass this unanimously? Okay, hearing no objections, that'll be unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to TC 29-16. Can I have Ms. Satin, please, bring that to the floor?
Okay, Resolution TC 29-16, be it resolved that Lucinda Timpinelli be and the same is hereby appointed as the Board of Education Representative to the Trumbull High School Weight Room and Wellness Center Building Committee.
Can I have a second, please?
Dee Dee Robinson?
So this is so nice. Everybody's like jumping up to help and everything. This is wonderful. So Ms. Lucinda Timpinelli kicked off this meeting with why she wants to do this. Do we need any further discussion at this time? Ms. Timpinelli, can you just state your party affiliation again for the benefit of the listeners?
Yes, Lucinda Timpinelli, Democrat. And I am hopeful that we can establish this committee because, as Mr. Buswell said previously, this was supposed to be done at the renovation of Trumbull High School, and it was one of the four items that did not come to fruition. So it really truly needs to be done, and I'm happy if we can start the progress with, with, excuse me, with it right now. Thank you.
Thank you again for your dedication and time. Do we have any objections? Can we pass this unanimously? Excellent. We are moving on. That was unanimous. We are at TC 29-17. Can we please have, you know, I'm kind of running out of people. So we're going to have to circle again. Sorry, everyone. Mr. Robinson, we're going to go back to you. Can you please read TC 29-17?
Okay, resolution TC 29-17 be resolved that Mark Mascola be in the same is hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Board of Finance for a term extending to the first Monday of December 2024.
Thank you very much. Can I please have a second?
I'll second that, Nikki Satin.
Thank you so much, Ms. Satin. Is Mr. Mascola here?
I am.
Okay, can you please state your party affiliation and why you'd like to be part of the committee?
Sure thing. I'm registered Republican and I served on the Board of Finance as an alternate for the last several years. Thoroughly enjoyed my time there. I think we made significant progress in collaboration with the Board of Ed as well as, as well as the other town departments. And I think I bring a pretty, pretty extensive experience to the, to the committee and really enjoy helping out the town.
Thank you so much. And I did misspeak. I did say committee because I had said that for like the last seven appointments. But this is Board of Finance. So I'm just to clarify for everyone's benefit, which you said in your introduction. Do we have any further discussion or questions from Mr. Mascola?
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
So we have two resolutions in our agenda today, TC 29-17 and TC 29-18, which name two people for the same seat as an alternate on the Board of Finance. Now, obviously, that is something that the full town council is going to have to address on Thursday and decide who the town council would like to see in that, that position. But as such, because we have these two things, and I, I'm happy to hear from the, the next nominee as well, just to give her the opportunity to, to express her positions as well. But the, I would like to make a motion and suggest that we pass both of these resolutions without recommendation so that we can give the full town council the opportunity to, to address who the town council would like to see in this position. So initially, I would make a motion that I will ask for a second for, for resolution TC 29-17 to be passed onto the town council without recommendation.
Have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Nikki Satin.
Okay, I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Shively. So that said, I think that we can move on to resolution TC 29-18.
I think we do, do need to make sure that it is either unanimous or passes by roll call vote, however, this motion.
Okay.
Without recommendation.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that greatly. For our committee's benefit, are we able to go ahead and unanimously agree to this? So I'm nodding to everyone who is currently on the committee, Ms. Malazie, Ms. Satin.
And just to be clear, we're only talking about TC 29-17 initially.
Okay, seeing as there are no objections, it seems to be unanimous at this time. Thank you so much, everyone. And thank you, Ms. Mascola. We will see you on Thursday. Okay, let's go on to the next one, TC 29-18. Can I please have Ms. Malazie bring that to the floor?
Resolution TC 29-18 be it resolved that Lori Rosasco Schwartz be in the same is hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Board of Finance for a term extending to the first Monday in December 2024.
Thank you. And can I have a second?
Dee Dee Robinson, I second that.
Thank you. And Ms. Schwartz, hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Welcome back. Good, thank you. Same to you. So can you please state your party affiliation? And the same question I had for Mr. Mascola.
Sure. My party affiliation is Republican. I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I am a CPA. I've worked in accounting and finance for close to 38 years. I started my career as an auditor at PricewaterhouseCoopers and I've spent the remainder of my career working for multinational and Fortune 500 companies. I've served as a corporate controller, as a manager of budget, financial planning and analysis. And I'm currently the Director of Audit and Advisory Service for Finny Bose, which is multinational e-commerce and technology company. So in addition to my professional background, I served four terms on the town council and I was an active member of the Finance Committee. I had previously served on the committee as its vice chair. During my eight years on the council, I gained a very, very thorough and deep working knowledge of the town budget and the workings of the town finances. And I participated in many of the Board of Finance budget hearings throughout my time on council. So I'm very, very familiar with the process. I'm very interested in continuing to give back to my community. I've served as an active volunteer my, you know, pretty much my whole adult life. I've been on the PTA, Natasha and Madison in Trumbull High. I've been on the PTA, S.A., PT, S.A. Council. I've been on a number of service trips to Appalachia, rebuilding homes for the disadvantaged there. I've been a Girl Scout leader, junior achievement instructor, manager of youth soccer teams, catechism instructor, Christ the King, in addition to serving on council for eight years. So, you know, I think my professional background coupled with my knowledge of the town finances will allow me to hit the ground running in this position. And I hope that you'll consider me for it to, to again, help me give back to the community that I've grown up in.
Thank you so much for sharing that background. So, Mr. Shively, would you like to bring a motion again?
Yes, I would make the same motion for TC 29-18 to be passed on to the town council, to the full town council without recommendation.
Okay, can I have a second?
Motion.
Second, Kelly Malazie.
Thank you. Can I have a unanimous vote on this from our committee at this time? Excellent. I see no and hear no objections. So we're going to pass that. Ms. Schwartz, nice to see you again, Rosasco Schwartz. We will see you again on Thursday.
Thank you. Good to see you as well.
You too. All right, moving on to TC 29-19. Can I please have, let's see, Mr. Boswell, read that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Resolution TC 29-19 be it resolved that Christopher DeCruz be the, be and the same be here appointed the Town Council Representative to the Aquatics Facilities Building Committee.
Thank you so much. Can I please have a second on that?
Robinson, I second that.
Thank you so much. Mr. DeCruz, are you here?
I am, yes.
Hi, nice to see you here again. Can you please tell us your party affiliation?
Republican.
Okay, and can you tell us why you want to be on the Aquatics Committee?
Interested in ensuring that the town and the residents and students have a good facility for their aquatic recreation. I have a background in engineering and way back when I was a lifeguard. So I think that both of those things are relevant for working on a pool.
Thank you very much. And thank you again for wanting to volunteer. Can we pass this unanimously? Dear committee members, excellent. I don't hear any objections. So Mr. DeCruz will see you in two capacities on Thursday. Thank you so much. Okay, that is passed unanimously. We are at TC 29-20. Mr. Robinson, can you please bring that to the floor?
Okay. Sorry. Resolution TC 29-20 be it resolved that Mike Boswell be and the same is hereby appointed to Town Council Representative of the Community Facility Building Committee.
Thank you very much. Can I please have a second on that?
Dee Dee Robinson, I second that.
So you can second it, but thank you for wanting to. Can I have someone else second that, please?
Kelly Malazie, second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boswell, would you like to share your interest in this committee as well?
Sure. So I'd like to start off that I'm, I'm pretty familiar with all of the buildings. You know, I went to Dingo's Farm, Hillcrest and Trumbull High School. My wife teaches in, you know, at Frenchtown Elementary School. So I'm very familiar with, with many of the buildings throughout town. But I've always had a strong interest in making sure the exterior and interior of all of our buildings are in great shape for all of our residents. So it's just something that I've always been interested in. And so now the position that I'm in, I would love to be able to learn more a little bit about the buildings, be, be helped any way possible.
All right, thank you so much again, Mr. Boswell. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we pass this unanimously? Excellent. Thank you so much, committee. We'll see you again as well on Thursday. And you're here for the rest of the meeting too. So we're kind of holding you captive, Mr. Boswell. All right, let's move on to TC 29-21. Can we please have Ms. Malazie bring that to the floor?
Resolution TC 29-21 be it resolved that Chris Vandeky be and the same is hereby appointed as the Board of Education Representative to the Middlebrook School Roof Building Committee.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second, Nikki Satin.
Thank you, both of you. Is Mr. Vandeky here? Okay, Mr. Vandeky.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is Cindy Katske.
Please.
Mr. Vandeky indicated to me that he was not sure he would be able to attend tonight. I did ask him if he would be able to attend on Thursday night. And I'm not sure. I don't think I've gotten a response from him yet. I'll keep trying.
Okay, thank you very much for the benefit of our viewers and the public. Mr. Vandeky is appointed currently, elected to the Board of Education. So this is just him being appointed as a representative for the roof committee. So I just wanted to clarify that, that point. So we will. Do we want to pass this through for our members of the committee? Or do we want to take a vote on this?
Madam Chair, I would, I would make a motion since we have not heard from Mr. Vandeky yet. I would make a motion to pass this on to the town council without recommendation.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Nikki Satin.
Thank you very much. Okay, can we unanimously agree to let this motion sit as it were? Thank you. Hearing no objections, we will be moving on. Thank you so much, Mr. Shively and Ms. Satin. Resolution TC 29-22. Ms. Satin, you're up.
Hey, resolution TC 29-22 be it resolved that the 2022 Trumbull Redistricting Committee be and the same is hereby established. The full resolution is attached. Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Let's see. Resolution TC 29-22 be it resolved that the 2020, number one, the 2022 Trumbull Redistricting Committee be and the same is hereby established. Number two, the said committee shall consist of seven members comprising the two registrars of voters, two town council members, one from each political party and three electors of the town of Trumbull. Number three, the said committee shall recommend to the town council a redistricting plan compromising, I'm sorry, comprising voting districts of substantially equal populations, including the specific boundary lines of each of those districts. Number four, the said committee shall hold its organizational meeting no later than February 1, 2022. And number five, the said committee shall render its final report to the council no later than April 4, 2022.
Thank you very much, Ms. Satin. Can I have a second on this motion?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you. For the benefit of our committee, can we pass this unanimously? Are there any objections? Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, please.
This is Dan Shoupik. I would ask you to consider an amendment to, to the last sentence that, which is the report back date. The April 4th is the April meeting of the town council. In order to comply with state statute in terms of redistricting, the redistricting needs to be in place by May 11th, which is 90 days prior to the August 8th primary date. In order for that to happen, it would be, I think, beneficial if the report came in sometime during the month of March so that the committee could consider that prior to the, the council committee can consider the report prior to the April 4th meeting. And hopefully, the recommendation will be put into effect.
Okay, Mr. Shoupik, do you have a specific date? March 7th is a town council meeting. So would it be prior to that or after?
It would be after. I would say March 15th is a, is a target date. I can amend that later, but the, and I would also just to put in the minutes, I would hope then also that this would be made emergency legislation at the council meeting so that the redistricting committee can get started.
So noted. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I would, I would make that motion to change the date of the point number five to read final report to the council no later than March 15th, 2022.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that motion?
I can, Kelly Malazie.
Thank you very much. Can we pass that unanimously for the reasons stated by Mr. Shoupik? Thank you very much, committee members. Passed unanimously. All right, we are moving on to TC 29-23.
If I may.
On the motion. There was a vote, there was a vote on the amendment.
Thank you very much. Can we please have a vote on the amended motion? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, are there any objections to the amended motion or will this be passed unanimously, committee? Great, you're in agreement because you said nothing. Isn't that a great thing? You're all set. Thank you so much. Okay, we are moving on to TC 29-23. Why don't we have Mr. Shively bring that to the floor?
Certainly. Resolution TC 29-23 be it resolved that Tony Sento be in the same is hereby appointed as a Town Council Representative to the 2022 Trumbull Redistricting Committee.
Okay, there. Can I have a second?
Dee Dee Robinson, second.
Thank you very much. End discussion. Mr. Sento is here. Why don't we let him speak to this resolution? Hi there. We can't hear you. He's mute. He's muted. Tony, there he is.
Sorry, sorry, I had the wrong, I had the wrong mouse. So hold on.
Thank you.
So what do you want me to tell you?
So just for the benefit of the viewers and everyone listening and perhaps our new council members as well, your party affiliation and why you want to serve on the committee?
Part of affiliations, Republicans. What I want to serve, I know Carl put me on the agenda. I didn't, I didn't know until I got the agenda. And I've done this, this will be the third time. So I don't know.
You're, you're pro, is that right?
Well, I wouldn't go that far, but.
Okay.
I wouldn't go that far.
Okay, thank you so much.
Probably why, yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So just to be clear, I take no pleasure in, in sharing this, this opinion, but I will be voting no on this resolution and I'll tell you why. I was on the redistricting committee the last time that we did this with Mr. Sento. And unfortunately, his behavior did elicit a ethics complaint and a reprimand from the Ethics Commission for defaming a, a member of our, our Trumbull community that was volunteering his time and services in support of the town. Furthermore, my experience, my personal experience, and this is only my personal opinion, is that Mr. Sento's participation in that committee made the work of that committee materially more difficult than it needed to be. And I don't see any reason why his participation going forward would be any different than it was the last time. So unfortunately, I'm, I'm going to have to oppose this resolution.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing. Any further discussion? Okay, so rather than get into any kind of back and forth, why don't we go ahead and bring it to a vote? And it sounds like it's going to need to be a roll call. Margaret?
Nicole Satin. Kelly Malazie?
No.
Kevin Shively?
No.
Dee Dee Robinson?
Yes.
Mike Boswell?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to TC 29-24. Can I please have Mr. Robinson bring that to the floor?
A resolution TC 29-24 be it resolved that Alyssa Hall be in the same is hereby appointed as a Town Council Representative in the 2022 Trumbull Redistricting Committee.
Thank you so much. Can I please have a second? Thank you so much. Can I please have a second?
Second, Kelly Malazi.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hall? Hi there. Ms. Hall is newly elected as a town council representative as well. Can you please share your party affiliation and why you'd like to be on the committee?
Sure, I'm a registered Democrat. Like you said, I'm new to town council. I've been on the board for the Civil Services Committee the prior three years. I would like to serve to ensure that there's equity among the districts of Trumbull.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Will this be a unanimous vote? Will anyone be objecting from the committee? Hearing no objections, this is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Hall. We will see you on Thursday. Okay, we are at TC twenty-nine dash twenty-five. Mr. Boswell, can you please bring that to the floor?
Sure. Resolution TC twenty-nine twenty-five be it resolved that Laurel Anderson be in the same is hereby appointed as a member of the twenty twenty-two Trumbull Redistricting Committee and is further appointed as its chair.
Thank you so much. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second Nikki Satin.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have further discussion? Is Ms. Anderson here?
I am.
Hi there, Ms. Anderson. Thank you so much for joining us. Can you please state your party affiliation and why you'd like to be on this committee again?
Sure, my name is Laurel Anderson. I'm a registered Democrat. I was a member of the twenty twenty redistricting committee and served as the chair. I have sort of a lifelong passion for things to do with elections and fairness and equal access and would be very happy to continue the process of redistricting.
Okay, thank you so much for your service. Do we have any objections to this reappointment, as it were?
I'll just say this, Madam Chair, that Ms. Anderson has probably forgotten more about elections and things than most of us have ever learned. So I'm really eager to see her on this committee again.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we pass this unanimously? Excellent, thank you, committee. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your service. That is unanimous. We are moving on to TC twenty-nine dash twenty-six. Can we please have Ms. Satin bring this to the floor?
Resolute, resolution TC twenty-nine dash twenty-six be it resolved that Thomas Kelly be in the same is hereby appointed as a member of the twenty twenty-two Trumbull Redistricting Committee.
Thank you. Can I please have a second?
Second, Kelly Malazi.
Thank you very much. For further discussion, Mr. Kelly, are you here?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Happy New Year.
Good evening, thank you.
Members of the committee and happy New Year to you and your families. I'm a registered Democrat and I served on the twenty twenty redistricting committee along with Laurel Anderson and Mr. Sento and Jean Rabanel and Kevin Shively and I think we did a good job. So this has to be done in short order again this year and so I'd like to serve on the committee again and and that's really why I'm here tonight.
Okay, thank you again for your dedication and service to our committee members. Can we pass this through unanimously? Thank you. Hearing no objections, this is unanimous. We are moving on to our very last resolution of the evening. Thank you for all who have participated tonight. TC twenty-nine dash twenty-seven, Mr. Robinson, can you please bring that to the floor?
Okay, resolution TC twenty-nine dash twenty-seven be it resolved that Mark Block be the same and hereby is appointed as member of the twenty twenty-two Trumbull Redistricting Committee.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that?
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you so much. And for further discussion, I see that Mr. Block is here. Can you please share your party affiliation and why you want to be part of this committee?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman Cologne. Happy New Year, everybody. Mark Block, still a registered Republican. I'd like to serve on redistricting because the location of our district lines decide which voters vote for which representatives. And changing the lines can change the relevant voters, the identity and potentially the priorities of the community. We have a lot of work to do in a very short period of time and it's in our hands to establish lines that are truly representative of all the voters.
Okay, great. Glad to hear it. Let's see, is there any further discussion from our committee? No, can we pass this unanimously? Great, hearing no objections. Thank you, Mr. Block, for your service. Again, we will go forward with all of these appointments to the full council for Thursday evening. Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second, Kevin Shively.
Thank you. I wish you all a great evening. Thank you all for your help and support, Mr. Chin, Ms. Margaret, and thank you. Have a great evening.
Have a great evening.
Everyone, have a good night. See you tomorrow.